I called order, the September eleventh, twenty eighteen, meeting of the Sla- of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Before we stand for the flag salute and moment of silence, I want to reiterate that today is a special day, uh, sit in nine eleven. So I want everybody to keep that in their thoughts and prayers and minds, uh, this point forward. This time I'd ask you to please stand and join in the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This time, uh, we have our public forum, where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, items that are not on today's agenda.
Norman Manleswana, how far down the road is this jail information gonna be available? When you're gonna have, present the information you gathered, when will it be available? Will it be on the website, will it be printed in the paper? How are we gonna get access to it to see it?
It's, it'll be in a public, public forum, it'll be also, uh, on our website, uh, when it's determined what we've got to, to, uh, show everyone, so it will be public.
Three months?
I, I don't know, that the, the, the consultant's still working on the final preparations. Is there anyone else we should speak? We'll now move on to regular business, item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Been moved in second that we approved today's agenda for the public forum as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for September fourth, twenty eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of September fourth, twenty eighteen, as presented.
Second.
Alright, so we moved in second that we accept the county commission minutes of September the fourth, twenty eighteen, as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, item number three.
RFA one eighty-two dash eighteen, community corrections, general IT contract.
Uh, okay, it looks like we don't have Annie Greaves.
Sherry Kraus filling in for Annie since she's in court this morning.
Good morning, Sherry.
Good morning. Um, Community Corrections is asking for commission approval to sign, um, a general IT service agreement with Studio F. Um, we did get, uh, some alternate bids, which I think you've had a chance to look over. But, um, he is a little bid, um, and this is someone that's familiar with our unique needs, um, in our agency, so you'd like, um, you're okay to sign that agreement with him.
Questions of Sherry from staff, from the commission?
Yes, I just have one, and, and I have got a little bit of information back on this, but one of the, uh, my questions is, is why are we going out for bid? Who, what's, what's going on that we, we, who has been doing our IT support over the years?
We have, um, had a service agreement with ISG in the past.
Okay.
And that one has come to an end, um, and we're looking at changing providers.
Okay, and, uh, was it that their rates were a whole lot more than this, or?
Their rates are higher, um, we've had some issues with response time from them, and just, yeah, so we were, we're looking at options and, um, we liked this one.
Okay, and this, and this new Studio F, I know it's somebody that has departed from that company.
It is, yes.
And, and started their own new business, so do you feel that down the road that they have the support, I mean, that they have the, also the manpower to take care of your immediate needs?
That has been a concern, um, but we have surprisingly run into that with ISG as well. Um, they've had staff turnover lately, um, the person that provides service in Salina, um, is actually based in Wichita. So, yeah, even though that's a larger company, we still have that same.
And so you're gonna have the same problem going with this company too?
We ma- we may.
Yeah, and you may not, okay.
Time will tell.
Yep, gotcha, okay.
Well, I, I'll, I'll weigh in there, um, I, I would, I would prefer going with the Sling County IT, I mean, you're talking two hundred dollars difference, and, uh, and with no additional fee if needed after hours, whereas Studio F is fifty dollars an hour if needed after hours. Uh, I mean, that's only, we're only, we're talking two hundred dollars, so that's four hours worth of work after, afterwards, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking at, uh, potentially a lot more money. And we would have a lot more control, it seems to me like, if, if, uh, Sling County IT were to, to cover this, but that's, uh, that's my opinion.
But, and one of the, can I?
Sure, go ahead, I think.
Mr. Bowers, question, uh, I mean, and, and since you are here representing the Sling County IT staff, uh, do you feel that, I mean, it would just put such a burden on our IT staff that since you guys are already busy, do you feel that this would jeopardize anything else if you, if, if this did happen, I mean, I'm, I'm just going, do you have the manpower?
I, I think in the past manpower would have been an issue, but I don't, I don't believe it is today.
Okay.
Um, I think we could handle the, the extra load.
And, and there's, i- is this all a PC base, or it says an AS four hundred type base that you're running?
Well, this is for, to maintain our server, make sure it's up to date, um, our firewall over there, um, the.
But is it all P- PC based, servers and all, everything?
Yes, it's a Windows, it's a Windows network.
Okay, oh, that, I guess, yeah, that's okay, thank you, so, but that's, yep, I just, uh.
I like the fact that you brought a recommendation, I'd, I'd like to ask the question, was it, was it, uh, just cost that, that drove the selection here? Or were there some other issues with not selecting the S- Sling County's IT, uh, you can be frank?
Um, I, I think it's just because, um, the Studio F, Devin Fortcamp is, is someone that's been with ISG for a lot of years, and he's very familiar with our system, um, I think the county has worked with him as well, um, so that was, that was one thing that, um, drove our decision, um, to go with him, and I think, um, that the county supported that also, is we have their, uh, county administrator's recommendation to go with that as well.
Further questions? Are we ready for a motion then? Administration wish to weigh in at all?
We did, Andrew and Brad and I staffed this pretty completely, and, um, we felt comfortable with them going with, uh, Studio F after everything considered.
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, with staff's recommendation, I, I say, uh, I move we sign the IT service agreement, Studio F Inc., as requested by staff.
Second the motion.
Uh, it's been moved in second that we sign the, uh, RFA one eighty-two dash eighteen, uh, service agreement with, uh, Studio F as requested by staff, is there any further comments? All those in favor, excuse me, it's been moved in second, uh, all those in favor of the, uh, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, nay?
Nay.
So it's two to two.
Oh, shoot.
So we'll wait, uh, and probably have to have you make a re-proposal, uh, at what point that we have, uh, two commissioners here, or five commissioners, I mean, and, uh, come up with a casting vote. Alright, thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number four.
Flu clinic and upcoming flu season public announcement with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, commissioners, how are y'all doing today?
Good.
So we thought we would kinda get ahead of some of the questions and myths that we kept running into last year with flu season getting ready to come up, um, and then talk a little bit about the upcoming community flu clinic. So, just in general, flu season runs usually through October through May, and peaks mostly in December and February. Just keep in mind that flu differs from the common cold, you can see the list of symptoms here, and all of this information, when I get done today, is gonna be on our website as well, so public will have access to it. Sudden onset, that is probably one of the key differentiating features between the common cold and the flu. Generally with the common cold, you'll have a gradual onset of symptoms, uh, my throat feels kinda scratchy, you know, I might be congested. When the flu hits, you can pretty much pinpoint when, at what point of that day you got sick, and when it, when you're feeling it. Some people have fever, of course, cough, sore throat, runny nose. So CDC has a, what they call a take three actions to fight the flu, uh, and these three actions are vaccinate, stop germs, and use antiviral drugs if they're prescribed. So in vaccination, the annual flu vaccine is the best protection that you can have against getting the flu. It's recommended for kids six months and older, uh, for new kids that are just getting flu shots, it's recommended two doses that are four weeks apart, just to get their immune system going. And then from that point on, then they will ha- need an annual one. We also have high, uh, dose flu vaccine for those that are sixty-five and older, um, to help boost up their, their immune system as it starts to, um, maybe not work properly, or if maybe they have some sort of, uh, chronic disease or something like that. Uh, when to get the vaccine, best time to get it is now, we have flu vaccine already available, um, at the Health Department, and other places do as well. It's best to get it before flu season starts, and it takes about two weeks, once you get the flu shot, for your, your immune system to fully ramp up, um, and be able to recognize flu if you're exposed to it. It's like I said, we have it, we can start giving it now, uh, adults can do, they can walk into the Health Department. Kids, we prefer, uh, an appointment so that we can also check their other vaccines, make sure they're up to date on those. And then on October third, as I mentioned in my update, couple weeks ago, we will have the community flu clinic at the four H building, as we've had each year, where we have either the walk-in or the drive-through. Like I said earlier too, we have partnered with, uh, Sling County Sheriff's Office to do a drug takeback of any expired or excess medication, um, of any type can be dropped off through both of those methods during the community flu clinic. We will be doing city, county, school, district employees, uh, over at the Health Department on, uh, the eleventh. And then we will also be giving flu shots at the senior center, um, we've got a date scheduled for that, and then, um, home health nurses will be doing some of the outreach clinics to some of the smaller, um, assisted living facilities and places like that. So the second step in fighting flu is to stop germs, so you will try avoid contact with those that are sick, if you're sick, stay home. Don't come to work and spread it around to all of your employees, especially if you happen to work in one of those cubicle farm type offices where you're all in close contact. It's recommended that you should be fever free for twenty-four hours without taking any kind of fever reducing medication, like Tylenol or Ibuprofen, before you return to work. Uh, when you sneeze, cough, cover your mouth and nose, wash your hands often and thoroughly, you can use handis- uh, hand sanitizer if you are not able to wash your hands, but washing your hands is still the best method for, uh, getting rid of those germs, and then clean and disinfect surfaces that may be contaminated, so, you know, spraying down the door knobs, common touch places with Lysol, things like that. Or if you get somebody that is at work sick, then, you know, you might need to like hose down your whole office area with Lysol when you send them home, so that you're not contaminating anything else. Uh, take the antiviral medications, they work best if they're taken within forty-eight hours of onset, so like if this afternoon, for instance, if you started feeling ill, you went to urgent care, got, uh, they tested you, and even if your flu test doesn't necessarily come back and say that you have influenza A that they test for, 'cause there are other strains of flu, it'll likely give you, if it matches flu, or if your symptoms match flu, they'll give you the antivirals and you start taking them, and that will shorten the, the length of the infection, help reduce some of the impact of this, of the symptoms, and any kind of possibility of complications. So a couple of questions that we kept getting last year, or that we've heard myths-wise, is one of them, can I get, still get sick even with a flu shot? Unfortunately, yes, um, like I said, there are a lot more flu strains out there than the four strains that are contained in the flu shot. When they develop what four strains are gonna be in the flu shot, they generally look at what they think are gonna be basically the top four in circulation. So you could be infected with another one that's out there, there's a lot of them. The other, uh, possibility is that you were either affected right before you got the flu shot, or right around the time that you got it, before your immunity was able to completely ramp up to it. So that's one of the, one of those two ways you might, how you might get sick even with getting a flu shot. On that other token, you cannot get sick from getting the flu shot, and we, we hear that one often, I don't wanna get a flu shot, 'cause it always makes me sick. Well, no, you're not getting sick, you're not getting the flu from the flu shot. Uh, you might have a common vaccine reaction at the site, which can happen with any vaccine, where you might have some redness and tenderness where you got the shot. Uh, you could have a low-grade fever for a day or two and some body aches, and then again, that's just your body's immune response, getting ready for, uh, recognizing influenza down the road. But you did not get flu from the flu shot. So monitoring, um, CDC and the state monitor what they call influenza-like illness, um, because a lot of places, if it looks like flu, sounds like flu, they treat it as flu, they don't always test for it. So, we will, and then these numbers in this monitoring is updated weekly. There's two websites there, if anybody's interested, but we'll be monitoring those, Slana Regional monitors their inpatient ICU for fluid missions. Uh, and as we've seen in the past, if they get a lot of flu ca- flu cases, you know, they will shut down general access to the hospital and keep it minimized, so that they keep, um, flu out of those, some of those areas where, you know, people may have just had surgery and things like that, so that they aren't, um, infected. And we'll be monitoring all those throughout the flu season, inclu- including the syndromic system, um, essence, so we'll be able to see a lot of that information. And that too will also help us if the flu season, for some reason, starts getting bad early, things like that, to be able to start taking additional steps, either putting out additional messages, things like that. Additional resources, of course, like I said, all this information will be on our, on our website, um, throughout flu season, we'll have stuff on social media, KDHE, CDC has information. And then, uh, you know, if, if anybody, instead of trying to sit there and read through a lot of just boring, complicated documents that CDC has, that it's a whole lot of words, not a lot of pictures, because it's, you know, just academic and scientific. They also have a, um, graphic novel they've developed called The Junior Disease Detective's Operation Outbreak, that can be downloaded and/or, you know, looked at on tablet, printed, um, for some people, this is more entertaining than trying to read the academic journals. It certainly looks a little bit better than, than just plain print, but you know, there's just different options if other people are looking for different information. And of course, they can always call us at the Health Department and ask questions, um, inquire about flu shots, and anything else for that matter. But this time, if there are any questions about flu, I'll take those.
I will, uh, simply state, I think I've stated it up here before, when we had last year's clinic, that, uh, I did go to the four H building, did get my flu shot there. It is a quick, easy, uh, simple process, uh, you're in and out in a matter of minutes, and, uh, easy way to get your flu shot, so there's no excuse not to have one, uh, if you choose to have one, so. I know the, the, the clinics here in town have a one-day thing, uh, but the, this gives you an alternative to going to your clinic, so, uh, it's, it's quick and easy, and, and. So, questions or comments from the commissioners?
Quick question is, if you get your shot this early, I mean, does, does your?
It will last throughout the entire flu season.
It do- it doesn't wear off in a month or two months?
No, no. So getting this, in fact, I've got mine already.
Okay.
I went and got mine, so nobody else can complain about getting theirs, but, yeah, if you get it, that's why we kinda recommend you start getting them now, so that when flu season starts ramping up in October and we start seeing it, then you've already got that protection, and it will last through the flu season.
And Jason, did I hear you say that walk-ins are, are available right now at the flu, at the, for adults?
At the Health Department, walk-ins are available.
Okay, thank you, any other comments? Thank you for coming.
Alright, thank you.
We'll move on to item number five.
Sling County Codes with Andrew Manley, Assistant County Administrator, Director of Finance.
Morning, Andrew.
Morning, commissioners, uh, I have distributed a packet to all of you that includes documentation I'll be, uh, talking about today. Uh, this is a culmination of a few months of project working on the codes, uh, so today we'll be presenting a proposal for a new layout of the Sling County Code. Uh, we will not be taking any action today, this is purely informational, uh, next meeting, if consensus agrees, I will bring a request for action before the commission to adopt this and move forward. So the core reasons why we were, uh, talking about codes, I think it all started with a question about if a code was applicable or not, and that's kind of evolved into what we'll be talking about, uh, the core reason is to save money. The first thing, it's an email, um, in your packets, email from Nancy to me from MuniCode, uh, for a quote for three thousand dollars to codify five resolutions that we've passed in the past two years, I think there was two in two thousand seventeen and three in two thousand eighteen that, um, that MuniCode had on their website, or we adopted, waiting to be codified, so basically, they take the resolution that we pass, and they turn it into a code, uh, so they manipulate, um, or they e- edit headers, they make sure the content flows properly, make sure it fits in their system properly, so that, we have to pay for that every time we pass a resolution that needs to be public. In addition, we pay MuniCode about a thousand dollars a year, just for a maintenance fee, to have MuniCode, so that's one of the core, core reasons why we're analyzing this today. The second is more control, um, it's our layout, uh, when I show you MuniCode, you'll sho- it's, it's a very standard, um, layout, uh, everybody in the country has the same layout, so it can't be customized to us, um, a lot of them, you'll notice, are cities, uh, so it's kind of, we'll have more control over what we do. Improve timing with codifying, as I mentioned before, some of these resolutions were passed in two thousand seventeen and have not been adopted into the code, they're kinda still sitting on the front rage, front page, waiting to be codified. And I wanna reiterate that there'll be no changes in codes, this is simply a change in the presentation of the codes, so none, none of the code book will be changing. Before we proceed, um, also attached to your packet is the adopting resolution from nineteen ninety-two, um, this is resolution, uh, ninety-two dash one-two-nine-oh, um, basically, um, establishing the Sling County Code Book, so when we do proceed, we'll have to, we may have to edit or, um, amend this resolution to, uh, reflect the new, new changes, so we will proceed. So the current environment is, the code book is hosted with MuniCode, um, up here on your screen, this is MuniCode, um, it's a very impressive website, uh, it's mostly medium to large-sized cities using this, um, you'll notice it's called Code of Ordinances, we don't pass ordinances, we pass resolutions. It's one of those standardized things that MuniCode does, it's geared towards cities, uh, so bringing it in-house, we can call it truly what it is, code of resolutions. Um, it's, it's organized in all these chapters, uh, general provisions, administration, animals, what, what say you, whatever. That's, when we pass a resolution, that's part of the codifying procedure, is they put the resolutions where they need to go in these chapters. It is impressive, but it is costly, uh, so the proposed environment. This is a test site, it's not permanent, of something that IT and I have put together, uh, br- basically bringing over all those resolutions, or all the, the co- Sling County Code on their own website, um, basically, they are a bunch of PDFs, uh, so we do lose some functionality, some interconnectivity functionality from MuniCode. That's fun. Here to have some technical difficulties, but, uh, take my word for it, there's a bunch of PDFs off to the side, again, this is a, just a test site, um, of all the codes that we brought over onto our website, um, so what we would be doing is we'd be hosting our website, we wouldn't have to pay those fees any longer. Now, the proposed code book will be entirely online, there'll be no more paper versions, uh, make updates and codify resolutions in-house with assistance from legal, and we can cancel the contract with MuniCode, savings could be three to five thousand, or should be three to five thousand dollars a year. As we were going through this process, we had an evolution of our code book. You also have this spreadsheet in your packets, so, um, what we, what we realized was, we were, we're trying to figure out who uses this code book the most, was it mostly internal staff, or was this external staff? Um, the answer is both, uh, so we needed to reorganize based on this logic. Previously with MuniCode, we did not have an internal chapter, there wasn't a chapter that was geared towards stuff that just applied to, um, Sling County staff. Uh, so on page one of your Excel spreadsheet, you'll see, in column two is, well, column one, chapter two, is the internal section. And then the title of those codes, you can kinda see, um, you know, the county administrator, the planning board, the traffic control, all these things applied just to county staff, it didn't really apply to citizens, it didn't affect citizens, it appla- it affected staff. So we wanted to create an internal section, so that is one of the biggest changes, um, that once we dug into this, that we figured out we needed an internal section. The second section, um, excuse me, on page two was chapter three, a general section. We had somewhat of a general section before, but this was, um, making it even more generic and putting more things in there. For example, we had, um, electric fences that was in fire prevention, um, that since that's, or, excuse me, it's on the offenses and miscellaneous provisions, we felt that needed to be brought, brought into the general section, just kinda some reorganization. The rest of the chapters, chapter four through chapter thirteen, are left relatively unchanged, so straight from MuniCode over, maybe one or two things, minor things have changed. So some other miscellaneous things that are in the PDFs, uh, they still retain hyperlinks in between the different resolutions, different codes, so from one document referencing another document, those hyperlinks will remain. Uh, we added a penalties and finable offenses section as well, that we did not have with MuniCode, so any time that there was a code violation that immediately resulted in a fine, we created a document that included all of those fines and offenses. Some of those included misdemeanors, some of those were just, you know, a straight twenty-five or fifty-dollar fine, but we felt it would be nice to add that as well. So that is presentation of the code book, uh, the next steps, if you, if consensus agrees, is we'll adopt this new code book, bring this process in-house, and cancel MuniCode. Uh, phase two, which will happen in the next month, would be modification or removal of existing codes, which is, I think, the entire intent of, of your questioning of the code book, is whether we needed certain codes, whether those codes were still applicable. I felt we needed to move everything over first, and then address what codes, uh, we need to amend or change, so, any questions?
So is it, i- am I reading this correctly, that it is the, administratively, it is s- suggestion that we move to this code book process?
Yes.
And, based on this, uh, this email to Nancy, uh, the total estimated cost is three thousand and five dollars to do the entire process?
That's just codifying resolutions, so there was five resolutions we passed in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen that they needed to codify. So if you go out to MuniCode, this is the, this is the homepage, uh, so, when you get into the chapters, these are, are, these have already been codified, so we'll pick on general provisions, and, actually, let's pick a different chapter. So, running it la- livestock running at large, this was a resolution number one twenty-eight, eleven dash twenty-seven, and fif- nineteen fifty-six. This didn't look like this when they passed the resolution, they had to take that resolution and make it. and make it look like it belonged in a code book. That's what codifying is. So when you go to our homepage, you will find five resolutions that have yet to be codified. And they will not codify it without our permission, because it costs three thousand dollars to do it. So they, that's the, that was the reason for the emails. They emailed Nancy saying, "Hey, would you like to codify these five resolutions?" And she emailed it to me, knowing we were working on this, and said, "Hold on."
So Andrew, uh, if we, if we get deep into the code book and start doing a lot of changing and everything, that's going to trigger a lot more expenses?
It will. Unless it's brought in-house, then there will be, it's just time at that point. And I think that's where this came, because we started looking at some of these resolutions. And each resolution, since they're all linked together, every page that they have to edit, because of all those links, you have to pay an extra, I think it's fifty dollars or whatever it may be.
But at this time, we only have five?
Five resolutions, but they're affecting hundred and sixty pages, at seventeen dollars and fifty cents per page.
Okay, I'm following you there.
So as we move forward, see, th- these are resolutions we've already passed. We haven't even started the process of going into the resolutions or the code book and saying, you know, electric fences, do we need to, is this still applicable? Emergency Telephone Fund, nine-one-one committee, those are things Sling County does not have any longer, so the resolutions can be deleted. In order for them to delete it, they're going to charge us.
Well, for, for my way of thinking, uh, we need to hold off on this. And do, I, I want to do some more diving into this, a little more thinking, uh, to put a little more of a pencil to it, to see what this could actually end up costing us. Uh, I want to pull the reins back just a little bit and say, "Whoa, let's, let's see what's uh, a little more of a d- a definitive number that it's going to cost us."
Sure.
That's, that's my feeling, but I'll let the other commissioners speak for themselves.
What is your, what's your scope of, of, of providing this to us today? What, what would you like to see happen?
Well, this was just purely presentational, be, or, or just me presenting this to you.
Okay.
Uh, since you haven't seen it, we've been working on this for a little while. We thought this is the direction that we wanted to go. Um, we've talked to Rita and I have talked about this for a while. Um, we felt bringing this in-house would save the county a, a good amount of money. Um, plus it allows us more flexibility and more uh, authority to make edits as needed. So this was purely, um, just for a presentation. We don't have to any, do any action today.
Who would be, uh, who would be the one to maintain?
I will. With assistance from um, the departments that are passing the resolutions or requesting the resolutions. And but help with codifying the resolutions, I'll run everything through legal.
As far as cost, you, this is, this is uh, being presented as a cost-effective way.
Yeah, cost savings measure.
Right.
If, if we don't do anything and continue with MuniCode, um, we'll pay three to five thousand dollars a year.
There's also some convenience there because of the way he reorganized it, so that the, in, you know, the in-house section versus the, what the community needs, it's a little more user-friendly, the way he put it together. Takes less research to find what you're looking for.
I guess what, what I would suggest is that, that you take this a, a step or two or three further and come back to us with, with a, a suggestion uh, of what you really, what it could really cost us and, and cost savings, time savings, going the other way. Uh, wh- why, justify the cost of it, is, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
The, the cost is already existing. I'm, I may not said it correctly. We, the three or five thousand dollars, the quote from MuniCode that you're seeing, if we do nothing and continue on, that's what it will cost. I'm trying to save that money.
Oh, alright, I didn't understand that direction.
I, I would definitely hold off doing any codifying until you have uh, you have something concrete to bring us and-
We will have, um, I believe it's in November, is when the, the yearly maintenance fee will come up, the one thousand dollars will come up. So that's the only date that we're, we're going to try to beat, and I would like to try to beat. Uh, but, uh, yes, we are definitely holding off on codifying these five resolutions.
So are you suggesting he comes back with a request for action, with a recommendation? Is that what you think the next step should be, with justification on the cost?
I, I would say that'd be my reasonable way of thinking at it anyway.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, I have another question. Andrew, on your, on your code ordinances here, you got chapter two and three.
Yes.
Are, are these just samples of a chapter of what?
That's, what you have in front of you is the actual chapter that should be showing up on the screens. For some odd reason, it is not.
But, but you don't have them for all these chapters that's in-
I do.
Oh.
It is done.
But they're all in on the website?
They are.
You just didn't print them off for us?
Exactly, so-
Okay, that's what, that's my question.
The reason I printed off chapter two and chapter three is it included a couple of existing codes that we're-
The internal and the-
The internal sections and general sections, what mostly changed when we did all this. But it also includes a handful of examples of codes that we could probably remove from the code book. Uh, one of those is, and so the chapter two, Internal Code Section, I believe it's page ten, page thirteen, um, the Emergency Telephone Service Fund and the Sling, Salina, Sling County nine-one-one committee, both of those don't exist anymore, uh, since the, the city took over the nine-one-one operations. Those don't exist. So those codes, those resolutions can be amended, or can be repealed.
Okay, thank you.
But that is going to cost us if we do so.
If we don't do anything, if we, if we don't move forward with a new layout, it will cost us, yes. It's kind of a fast backwards.
Alright, well, I'm going to need a little more time for
Sure.
my way of looking at this, I guess you'd say.
Just the, just the introduction of this stuff, um, I'll bring a request for action in a week or two and we can proceed then.
And this is available, I mean, we can look at this on our web, internal website?
Right after the meeting, I'll make sure those links are live. Uh, not too sure whether or not.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Rita. Is there any other business to be brought before the commission or announcements? Hearing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries, we are adjourned. And I will say that we will have a study session and an, and an additional meeting uh, in the adjoining study room uh, after a short pause. Thank you for watching.